Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Gosham Central School District, being held on Monday, October 16, 2023 at 6:30 p.m. in the District Administration Building, and being livestreamed onto-- let's start with the speakers.
Goodbye. I am T. T. Zivim, president of the American Civil Rights Alliance. One nation under God, equal to all. With liberty and justice for all.
Next order of business. I need a moment to go into the next segment. Shannon, Ashley. Under resolve, the Board of Education will enter into an executive session with the intent to reconvene with the business portion of the meeting here to discuss things related to a student discipline matter. Hold on one second. Okay, we'll be back shortly. Thank you.
I think motion to reconvene in the meeting. Shannon, Billy. All right. Next order of business before we move into the political floor, I asked more to share with our board members here. I'll give a couple of policies that we have. Over the past few weeks, we've been really trying to help bring some awareness to political floor and we usually have our members here. So there were a lot of questions and points that came up over the course of the past two weeks that I'd like to just point out to you folks and remember, see if you think about that. In our policy three, two, two, five, public participation at board meetings. The second to last, let's actually say, last paragraph here on the first page. Board will not permit in public session discussions involving individual district personnel or students. Persons wishing to discuss matters involving individual district personnel or students should present their comments and concerns to the superintendent during regular business hours. All speakers are to conduct themselves in a manner of seeing language, libelous statements, threats of violence statements, advocating racial, religious or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. So I think I'd like to hear from everybody. There were a few points regarding a little bit of a gray area in individual district personnel. A lot of folks come up here and express concerns about departments. And, you know, that's one item I'd like to hear from you. I, I think we might need some clarity in this statement. I personally think talking about the department in a respectful manner can be okay and it wouldn't necessarily indicate a specific individual. That was, you know, one item here that I think I'd like to hear from you and see what your thoughts were as well.
No, I agree. One of our missions is transparency and obviously give people a voice. It'd be kind of hard to have a voice when talking about a bus to not know transportation or, or to be able to give some light and actually have a voice and be able to talk. That's just a generalization.
Any opposing thoughts on that? So, you know, as we move forward our policy committee, this might be something you might want to give a little clarity to. On the contrary though, I, I think it would be fair to say that maybe discussing a specific title. If I said the high school principal, clearly know who I'm talking to. Even though I didn't say their name. Would you guys think that that might be fair as well? Maybe try to keep those titles out of there and keep it a little more general.
Yeah, I would agree. We, yeah, you know, we're going to mention departments, but I would agree that trying to curtail a little bit is also nice.
Okay, I agree with that. All right, good. And I think, you know, to Brett's point also, we really do want to encourage everybody still comes up here and shares good, the bad, the otherwise with us so we can get that feedback. There was one other point that came up in here that we discussed a little bit also, you know, there was some emails last week. We do have in here that the political floor should not exceed 30 minutes in total, which I think we've been really fantastic about keeping an eye on. Comments should be brief and concise and I really do think everybody in the past has come prepared instead of talking off the cuff. But I do feel two minutes might be a little too short. Honestly, I think maybe if we had about three to five minutes in there, this would be another area around policy we might want to look at and reconsider. It might be a little easier to be realistic, keeping someone within five minutes. Tonight we have four signups. There's 20 minutes right there, but it's a little easier to give a cue to wrap it up. Thoughts?
I think two minutes is a very short amount of time and well, I've been here on the board for a short amount of time. I think the people who have come to speak have asked for a little bit more time and we've, we've given everyone a little bit more time as far as I'm aware. I don't, I don't believe I've ever been in a meeting where we've ever asked someone to stop speaking because they went over their time. So I think we've been equitable that way, but I think you know, giving a little bit more time than three to five minutes would be a great idea.
Great. And in looking with the past practice, you know, I think we really do want to hear from everyone and hear what they fully have to say, good, bad or otherwise. So we're in agreement with that. I think we should revisit this policy, get some clarifications there moving forward. So let's just get right into the next point. So back to the first portion of this, or in the second portion, persons wishing to speak should first be recognized by the president, identified by themselves. Any group or organization wishing to address the board must identify a single spokesperson. Comments shall be brief and concise. We're going to be flexible on the two minutes, which may be extended discretion of the board president. Speakers may comment on matters related to district business only. And we've already read the other portion. All right. So first on my list, we have Samantha Michelson. Just a little microphone, but.
Good evening. My name is Samantha Michelson. I'm a mom of two neurodiverse boys, literacy specialist and our SEPSA secretary. I promise not to take too much of your time. I'm eager to get to the SEPSA first parents' parent support group that's being held tonight. However, I felt it was important to carve out some time tonight to update you on the impact SEPSA has had since our chartering just a mere nine weeks ago. We are 90 members strong and growing. If you haven't had an opportunity to read the article, New Community Initiated SEPSA Chapter Comes to Goshen Written by Jeffrey Chiriano, you can find it in the latest district newsletter and on the district homepage. We have spent a great deal of time introducing ourselves to the community, attending most of the open houses and beginning of the school year functions. We spoke to many caregivers and heard their concerns. We listened and carefully planned the year of education and advocacy to meet those needs. That being said, we have held our first meeting as a chartered organization, the Well-Attended Meet and Greet, where we received consent for our agenda and have our first of many speakers coming to support our parents on October 24th. The amazing Megan Dinyao will be joining us to offer families a comprehensive understanding of their student's IEP and Bible scores. This will be especially helpful for those beginning the process. As I already stated, tonight, we are holding the first monthly parent-to-parent support group. This is a safe, confidential, judgment-free opportunity for parents of neurodiverse children and suspected neurodiverse children to come together and share struggles, successes, frustrations and ideas. It's a space where a group of people who so often feel isolated, excuse me, so who's, who so often feel isolated can come together and support one another. and support one another and be supportive. It's something I'm humbled to be a part of. So far, we have the great pleasure of hosting two calm spaces, one at the homecoming dance and one for the CJ Hooker seventh and eighth grade dance. We want to thank the administration of both high school and CJ Hooker, as well as the all-night grad party committee and the CJ Hooker staff for reaching out to us and working with us to create these amazing spaces where the students were able to get away from the noise and stimulation of the dance, making an otherwise overwhelming experience, one they were able to enjoy. There was so much positive feedback. One student said, "It was so loud in there. The music was ringing in my head." Another said, "I need to break from all of that dancing and music." And many others simply stated, "Thank you for doing this." We have, we also have been told by an adult chaperone, they sent a student to the comm room because they couldn't, they could see that the student was struggling. The student came back to the dance a little while later and looked like a new person, able to enjoy themselves again. This is the benefit of the comm space. Not just for those with sensory needs, but for all. We look forward to our collaboration with the PTO, FAD SASS, and GIS. Offering a com space during the Spanish Trump retreat and a com space during the GIS's fifth grade dance. The success of these spaces has reinforced the need for implementation of more opportunities to increase alternative spaces, raise awareness, and make schools, the academics, as well as the extracurricular activities a place where all students can not only participate, but thrive. The comm spaces were a start, but we need to do more. After seeing the impact of these spaces during the dance, we would like to work with the faculty and staff to institute a comm lunchroom. The stimulation of a loud cafeteria space can often negatively impact students, causing an acute mental health crisis and making it difficult for students to reacclimate in the classroom setting. We want to work with the district to reinstate the STEM sensory room that once existed at SAS and expand it to all the schools. Research has shown that many of our students' behavioral outputs are due in large part to an over or under stimulation of sensory input. This is something we can control. We can support our students so that they're, they are not seen as the problem, so they are not getting written up for behaviors outside of their control. Finally, we want to increase awareness. We want to work closely with the building administration and faculty to begin a district-wide celebration of capabilities. It is our goal to ensure that all students are celebrated, all students are seen, mostly. It is our goal to ensure that all students are included. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Billy White.
Hi, good evening. Thanks, members of the board. Those who don't know me, my name is Bill White. My wife is Sarah White, president of the GCSD SEPSA. Sarah's not able to attend this evening. SEPSA's holding its first parent-to-parent meeting in Sam's. I've come here tonight to continue to speak for the community of parents and their children who have faced continuing frustration and advocating for their special education children in the district. Since the last meeting, Sarah and others expressed their concerns with PPS. The V O E YouTube video of that meeting has posted three thousand views. It seemed that the community is very concerned about what is happening with our children as well. Continuing to present transparency, speak on behalf of SEPSA as to the timeline of its creation. We'd like to keep an open dialogue in a public forum. Since the last meeting, SEPSA's had more parents and teachers come forward. Some were grateful, shining a light on the subject, or or SEPSA's shining a light on the subject, and some shared their own personal struggles. All of them were sort of made anonymous at this point. With timeline, February first, when Sarah first held the meeting of different parents, caregivers looking for support, managing needs, and advocacy skills for special education children. That was the first meeting which SEPSA was mentioned. After this, Sarah contacted New York State PTA to connect with the regional manager. February sixteenth, Sarah had her first phone call with representative. Email utilized to invite parents and caregivers, virtual meeting, New York State, discuss the details of the chartering on February twenty second. Following that meeting, they felt they had enough interest to gain twenty-five hundred to charter. At that point, Sarah was advised to reach out to the district to discuss chartering of the SEPSA in our district. In early March, sent out an email to the superintendent in PPS asking for a roundtable meeting. Three days later, there was a response asking for more detail. A response that same day, the send explaining the opportunity SEPSA could present. Pure view, two weeks went by with no response. Twenty seven of the March, Sarah again spoke with New York State. And although she had not heard back from the district, was told PPS had contacted New York State PTA a week earlier. The end of the phone call, Sarah again reached out to the district citing that some of the contact in New York State reminded them of her request for a roundtable meeting. The following day, Sarah received a phone call from PPS, that was March twenty eighth, stating that they felt they were coming in at the eleventh hour. Just recently, ten thirteen, SEPSA received an anonymous screenshot of a district email sent on March thirty first on PPS, the district staff, asking them to canvass the department to see if they received any correspondence from parents to the creation of the SEPSA. Feel that the persuade district employees to solicit information suggested there was information withheld. This SEPSA board has only put efforts towards furthering the good of the community. They'll continue to be transparent in this public forum. So I would ask myself, as a parent, why the pushback? And what exactly is so threatening? Why do we have this culture here? Why do we have this culture where parents are afraid to advocate for their own children? What kind of culture has been created when teachers are afraid to speak up for their students? Or fear retaliation for joining an open and transparent group solely created to get our special education children the interventions they need? And I would also ask the board respectfully to continue to look into these matters.
Very much. Next, we have Kristi Wevers.
Good evening. President, Provost, I'd like to thank you all for volunteering your time to help make decisions for the better approach to school district students, our children. My name is Kristi Wevers and I've been resident of the school for eight years. My husband is a graduate of the school. We have three children in the school district, a junior, an eighth grader, and a kindergartner. I have many more years in this district. Now, the reason why I've come to address you all tonight. I would like to raise my concerns about the CTEC program application process. We need to do better. My son applied to one of the CTEC programs for twelve more years and thankfully got in. We found out in August. You see, the initial letter he received in June denied him entry. As per the letter, quote, "Decisions are made to fill available seats based on a review of attendance, discipline, and academic progress data," end quote. I questioned that statement several times because it didn't make sense how it applied to my son. He gets good grades, he makes the honor roll or merit roll every quarter, has never been in trouble, and was absent about seven days the entire school year. Is that excessive? His friends got into their programs and a few of them even failed classes. I know the CTEC program is based on a lottery system and there was a chance that he would be waitlisted. But to be completely denied on the district's end based on criteria that seems biased makes me question this whole process. I started to ask questions and do a little research, found out I was not the only parent of these concerns. I decided, with my son's knowledge, to make some phone calls and send some emails to both the school district and CTEC program. In the end, he got in. We need to do better. My eighth grader is already talking about applying to a CTEC program when she can, twelve more years. I don't want to have to make waves again for something as simple as sending her application through, but I will. I will do it all from over again. But we'll give you the other time.
Very much. Next, we have Karen McDonald.
I'm Karen McDonald. I'm a speech launch pathologist in the Washington Center School District and I'm also a parent of two kids that go to this school, one of them actually has a five oh four. I just, first of all, would like to thank you all for this opportunity to express my gratitude. And that is what I would like to do tonight. I, above all, would like to express my that I'm grateful to be working with the children of our community and their families. I really sincerely feel lucky to be part of it and being able to go to work every day and see and work with our kids. I'm proud and thankful to be part of this PPS team. My colleagues are wonderful and I feel so lucky to be able to collaborate together for our kids that we work with. I'm grateful for the leadership, both from PPS and at my building level to help create a supportive environment and help police to professional development, initiate programs that help us and support our children. And I also am thankful and want to thank you directly to the board, superintendent, and assistant superintendent for providing us the resources to have these programs that we have and for the trainings that we receive. I'm just feeling very grateful. I just wanted to express that. So, thank you all for your time today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to our next order of business, that seems pretty important. Few items to go on. Last two weeks, we've had a big communication to the board in many matters and a lot of these communications have been pointing out the process that folks have been following, talk to building leadership, moving up to district leadership, and then bringing things to our attention. So we, we do appreciate all that insight. It's allowed us to put the emails and communication into the right hands with superintendent or other members of the team to ensure that they're being looked at. So, lots of communication and we appreciate the good, the bad, the otherwise. So thank you for that. We've had a good bit of movement on our governance handbook. I know we're basically working pretty hard getting some draft information together. Also continue to work on how to throw it in there and try to make more accessible information for folks who come into the meeting and have it ready for them as handouts. We're going to be looking at that a little bit later on in our meeting tonight during the discussions in the comments section. So we'll go over that a little bit specifically. And lastly, we're starting to build our board library. We have a couple of resources here to start adding to our shelves and our books for, you know, board members can look, some of the recommended reading. So we're physically actually building that as well, having that resource available to us to be good governance leaders. So that's my report for this evening. Skipping over our student representative report, as our student representative is not here tonight. Also, our legislative update, our Oxford report will be postponed until the next meeting. Moving on to our next point, do we have any other board member committee reports?
We were both on a facilities meeting. I want to say thank you to Mr. Fries. He did a fantastic job of calling us in and and really explaining what he's been doing in the background to make sure that our buildings are up to where they should be. And we're working towards a five-year plan and codifying that out so that we can, the board as a whole, will be able to have a nice graphical representation of where we think we should move year to year and the funding and how we're going to get there.
We have a policy meeting coming up at the end of this month and I know we have a lot to address to, to try to implement the policy into the code. There was some of that and there was some other policy that I know that we had to discuss. So it's coming up.
Great, thank you, thank you. Any others? Moving on to our next item, the superintendent's report after first clips.
Thank you, Mr. Loftus. So, it is a great time of the year as schools are starting up, but a lot of what we do, in fact, all of what we do could not be without the support of our Board of Education. And it is School Board Recognition Week, so. And the table in front of you is a small gift and I have to give a very generous thank you to Mr. Fedor. You'll notice that it's very personalized when you have an opportunity to open your gifts. So I all hope that you will join me right now in giving a round of applause, our Board of Education, our volunteers, and we couldn't do it without them. So it'll all be your thank you ever so much. So, I did receive some good news from my high school this week. It is that time of the year where we start to get results from our PSAT and SAT testing. And we've always looked forward to whether or not we're going to have any students that have received notoriety status. And I'm pleased to report to the board tonight that we have two national merit commended students, Judah Gordon and Nora Stanton from the high school. And we will be taking time over the next several weeks to make sure that we recognize them and potentially invite them here to the meeting. But it goes beyond just recognition of doing well on the tests. For a student to achieve that status, it is a course of study, it is a commitment to their education. And they're certainly to, pardon the redundancy, to be commended for being commended. That, that hard work certainly starts well before they ever take the PSAT test. We're very proud of their accomplishments and look forward to celebrating with them in the coming months. Also, good news to report to the board that Mr. Molnichal and I, along with the business office, had worked on a healthy meals initiative grant. And pleased to report to the board that we have been awarded over a two-year period just short of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Been meeting with Mr. Molnichal on ways that we can improve the services and the meals that we are offering to our students. I know he has been working a lot on meals with local farms, local initiatives. We'll be looking to work with the personnel office in terms of bringing in some additional staff to help support that. But we're so happy to, to receive that grant, very grateful for his work and the application for the grant. And one of the nice parts about the grant opportunity is the fact that they look for sustainability even beyond the funding of the grant. So it's not, if you will, one-hit wonder. It looks for ways to make permanent and sustainable improvements to our food service program. Finally, I'd like to invite forward Mr. Fries. One of the things that Vice President Whedon had spoken about was our work towards a five-year capital plan, but one of the things that this is really a bedrock of is how do we have ongoing maintenance in our facilities and our buildings? One of the pieces that Mr. Fries is speaking about is really a codified building maintenance schedule and some of the work that has to get done to make sure that things don't snowball and escalate. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Fries to speak a little bit in terms of what he's put together for work towards our building maintenance schedule.
Thank you, Dr. Coles, for the introduction and thank you to the board for inviting me to ask my thoughts about what maintenance is and we'll just begin by saying maintenance can be many things to different people. However, most of us realize we need maintenance for things to work right. Just like we need to eat and drink to function properly, our buildings need maintenance to function. Our district facilities have an insurable value in excess of eighty million and a replacement value of more than four hundred million. It is important that we manage the maintenance, operation, and repair of the facilities. Not only to preserve our investment, but to keep all who use our facilities safe and healthy. but to keep all who use our facilities safe and healthy and to provide an optimal environment for learning and other related activities. A comprehensive maintenance plan is a detailed strategy for managing and preserving functionality, performance and lifespan of buildings, equipment and infrastructure. It is a proactive approach to ensure that systems and components remain working as they are designed to. Key areas of the comprehensive maintenance plan, mostly as depicted in New York State. SCD is our budgeting costs, indoor air quality, health and safety, integrated pest management, energy management, preventive maintenance and current and planned projects. Our focus tonight is on preventative maintenance and our program in our district. Preventive maintenance is one of several categories of maintenance typically performed in our facility. The other categories of maintenance are requested maintenance or work orders and breakdown maintenance or repairs. Preventive maintenance are planned maintenance activities performed to prevent equipment failure or degradation. The goal of our maintenance strategy is to spend more time on preventative maintenance and less time on repairs. Preventive maintenance has been conducted in our district over the years, mostly through experience and dedication of our staff. Some operating records and equipment inventories were kept in journals and scheduled most mostly by a routine. Currently, our department has onboarded with a new work order system that not only facilitates requested maintenance, but which can be used for produce preventive maintenance tasks, complete with parts, special team, tools required and service history. Many of our building systems, such as boilers and unit ventilators, have exceeded the expected useful life. This longevity is a testament to the level of maintenance provided by our staff over the years. A couple of examples of preventive maintenance activities include what you see in the parking lots, that we've got some cracked ceilings, seal coating, debris striping of parking lots. We do roof inspections, remove debris from roof drains and surfaces of the roof. Exhaust stand inspections, we could be up there eighty rooftop exhaust stands per building. Those are quite a bit, so we check them, pull the true caps off, check for operation and wear and make sure that they function. Essentially, if the roof stand doesn't work, you know, pull air out of the building, you know, flare out of the building, you can't get air into the building. It's very important that system and component operates. In season, of course, we have boiler inspections and daily recording of operating conditions. As part of that system, the heating, heating water is important to have water treatment to prevent scale corrosion. So we do that, we take care of our emergency generators, we have two of them in the district. Take care of our fuel oil tank monitoring system. HVAC filter replacements at least three times a year. We service the contactors, actuators and controllers at least once when we replace the filters. Going to get them for a scanning of switchgear and electrical panels, looking for hotspots to tighten down on lugs, prevent R D U failures. Now scheduling replacement of batteries in the alarm panels instead of waiting for them to fail. So then we get maybe three years on a battery is a good example. We do testing and inspection of emergency lighting, inspection of fire extinguishers, cleaning inspection of kitchen exhausts. Inspection testing fire alarm system initiating devices, inspection of automated folding partitions and gym equipment. Inspection, I'm sorry, realigning of motors on pump sets. Was the coupling from shearing and breaking and causing no heat, no doping or other issues, no water. Testing backflow parameters and schedules for painting and flooring replacements. Areas where we're actively seeking improvement is with completion of painting in accordance with schedules and grounds made, specifically courtyard improvements. So I hope that I have quiet your whistle regarding maintenance. I'm not sure where we go with the conversations like the board, for vote of discussion or the committee as appropriate. And I appreciate your time allowing me to talk about. It's important.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next order of business, the business superintendent for business report.
Thank you and good evening. Tonight you'll find on the agenda, the approval of all of the newly outlets, there are three of those, which talked about those in the past. And I just want to see if anybody had any questions before we begin tonight. Next, the volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers tax exemption. We would like to have a public hearing for this on November sixth. And if the board so chooses, they can approve this exemption at the same mediated factor of the hearing.
Very much. Now to our next point, the assistant superintendent for creative instruction, personnel and technology report, Mr. Jason Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Loftus. Good evening, everyone. Just a brief update regarding three eight assessments. Shortly after our last board meeting, we received notification that three eight test results are no longer embargoed. So we are at the point now where we can retrieve all the data, begin to analyze that. So our plan is to do just that and present it at future board meetings. There are some key points that I'd like to mention about the spring twenty twenty-three, three through eight testing. So the first administration with our new next generation standards occurred in both math and E L A. That's very important because of course, as you would now imagine, it's it's not easy. It's actually quite impossible to do an apples to apples comparison from previous data to the twenty twenty-three data. But we will do our best to show you. Also, it's really important to understand that the previous assessments prior to the twenty twenty-three relied on the twenty-ten E L A standards and the twenty-eleven math standards. So the new next gen standards have been updated and it's quite important. Also, there was no administration of the science test for grade four. However, there was one for grade eight, I think that's very important as well. And the grade four not having a test was in preparation for the the actual performance-based tests or investigations that grade five will do and also the new grade five testing that will occur this year. So again, we should be able to pull all that data together for you in preparation for a future meeting and we look forward to sharing that with you. One additional item that I have, I'd like to mention that we did have Scholastic here, that whole team, to provide some in-person coaching with all of our elementary teachers and also our grade six teachers. Great feedback once again. And myself and the administrators had an opportunity to meet with the Scholastic team today here in in this room virtually to discuss our future plans for November. So once again, we will have some in-person training going on November seventh and November eighth, and we look forward to continuing our work with Scholastic.
All right, thank you, Mr. Carter.
Sure.
Moving on, I need a motion to approve. Billy, Brett. Be resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools, the Board of Education, except for retirement of Pamela Kluski, teacher eight, effective October twenty twenty-three. Ms. Kluski has been with the district for three years. Be resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools, Board of Education approves the remainder of the central agenda as presented. All those in favor? Aye. One of these items, the attendance is full business. Both attendants, after the business. Yeah, exactly. And we have two attendants here to some of our business, wanted to make sure it was just following the correct order. All right, moving on, full business. I need a motion to approve Goshen Solar One LLC pilot agreement. Scott and Ashley. Whereas Goshen Solar One LLC has submitted a notice of intent to the Goshen Central School District that it plans to build and operate a solar energy system as defined in New York Real Property Tax Law, R P T L, section four eight seven one B. Here in the project with an expected nameplate capacity, capacity approximately four megawatts A C on a parcel of land located at one eleven Owens Road, Goshen, New York, one zero nine two four, S B L ten dash one dash ten point two two. And whereas the Goshen Central School District has not opted out of our P T L section four eight seven, as of the date construction was deemed to have begun on this project. And whereas pursuant to our P T L section four eight seven nine A, the Goshen Central School District has indicated its intent to require a payment in lieu of taxes pilot agreement with Goshen Solar One LLC, under which Goshen Solar One LLC or any successor owner of the project will be required to make annual payments over a fifteen-year period to the Goshen Central School District for each year during the term of this agreement. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education and the Goshen Central School District approves entering into a pilot agreement with Goshen Solar One LLC for a term of fifteen years, on terms and conditions as recommended by its attorneys and further authorizes the board president to sign such a pilot agreement. Copy of which shall be placed on file. Favor? Aye. I need a motion to approve Goshen Solar Two LLC pilot agreement. I have Shannon and Billy. Whereas Goshen Solar Two LLC has submitted a notice of intent to the Goshen Central School District that it plans to build and operate a solar energy system as defined in New York Real Property Tax Law, R P T L, section four eight seven one B. Here in the project with an expected nameplate capacity, capacity of approximately five megawatts A C on a parcel of land located at one eleven Owens Road, Goshen, New York, one zero nine two four, S B L ten dash one dash ten point twenty-two. And whereas the Goshen Central School District has not opted out of the R P T L section four eight seven, as of the date construction was deemed to have begun on this project. And whereas pursuant to R P T L section four eight seven nine A, the Goshen Central School District has indicated its intent to require a payment in lieu of taxes pilot agreement with Goshen Solar Two LLC, under which Goshen Solar Two LLC or any successor owner of the project will be required to make annual payments over a fifteen-year period to the Goshen Central School District for each year during the term of this agreement. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education and the Goshen Central School District approves entering into a pilot agreement with Goshen Solar Two LLC for a term of fifteen years upon the terms and conditions as recommended by its attorneys and further authorizes the board president to sign such a pilot agreement. Copy of which shall be placed on file with the district clerk. Favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right. I need a motion to approve Broadley Road Solar One LLC pilot agreement. Scott, Brett. Broadley is helping. Broadley is.
Broadley.
Lovely. Okay. Just clearing. Broadley Road, let's get that right. Whereas Broadley Road Solar One LLC has submitted a notice of intent to the Goshen Central School District that it plans to build and operate a solar energy system as defined in New York Real Property Tax Law, R P T L, section four eight seven one B. Here in the project with an expected nameplate capacity approximately five megawatts A C on a parcel along Broadley Road, Goshen, New York, one zero nine two four, S B L nine dash one dash six point two. And whereas the Goshen Central School District has not opted out of the R P T L section four eight seven, as of the date construction was deemed to have begun on the project. Whereas pursuant to R P T L section four eight seven nine A, the Goshen Central School District has indicated its intent to require a payment in lieu of taxes agreement with Broadley Road Solar One LLC, under which Broadley Road Solar One LLC or any successor owner of the project will be required to make annual payments over a fifteen-year period to the Goshen Central School District for each year during the term of this agreement. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education and the Goshen Central School District approves entering into a pilot agreement with Broadley Road Solar One LLC for a term of fifteen years upon the terms and conditions as recommended by its attorneys and further authorizes the board president to sign such a pilot agreement, copy of which will be placed on file. Favor?
Aye. Aye.
Right, that concludes the old business. Move on to new business. This is where we have two attendants. Need a motion to approve the minutes. Shannon and Ashley. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the minutes of the October third, twenty twenty-three regular board meeting. All those in favor? Aye. Post. I need a motion to accept donation and authorize increase to budget. And Brett and Ashley. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education accepts a donation from the class of twenty twenty-three in the amount of four thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars to fund three new water fountains, bottle filling stations at Goshen High School. Be further resolved, the Board of Education approves increasing the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget by four thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars to support the associated expenditures. Appropriations totaling four thousand three hundred and sixteen, revenues totaling four thousand three hundred and sixteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion to approve special education agreement, bilingual speech and bilingual psychoeducational evaluations. I have Ashley and Brett. Be resolved upon the recommendations of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education enters into an agreement with S J and associates to provide bilingual speech and bilingual psychoeducational evaluation services for special education students affected for the twenty-one degree, twenty-two school year according to the following fees. Bilingual speech evaluations for four hundred and fifteen dollars per evaluation. Bilingual psychoeducation evaluations, one thousand seventy dollars per evaluation. Bilingual psychoeducational consultations, one fifty dollars per hour by phone, one hundred and seventy-five dollars per hour in person. Be further resolved, the Board of Education authorized the superintendent to execute the agreement. All those in favor? Aye. I need a motion for an expungement. Scott, Ashley. Be resolved, the Board of Education hereby approves the expungements of the following student discipline listed below consistently with code of conduct. Student code one zero one six two three, date of discipline, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Be further resolved, the Board of Education hereby approves superintendent of schools to take the necessary steps to actuate the expungement. All those in favor? Aye. Post. All right, I need a motion for student discipline decision. Shannon and Billy. Be resolved, the Board of Education hereby upholds its determination of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Board of Education decision regarding short-term disciplining suspension of a student number one zero zero three two two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post.
Post. Post.
Any additional privileges for assignments, Maureen? All right, moving into any board member issues.
Hi, guys. Dr. Coles, can you give the board a high-level overview of CTEC and how that works selection, so we have an understanding?
So when CTEC sees, most of us has an opportunity to come and represent directly at a high school, they articulate. They articulate some of programs that are available in their application process. They actually redid their application process, they went to a lottery where they used to go to a first-time first serve. From there, the counselors start to meet with programming with their potential students coming off and moving in. They talk about the application process. Again, without having the applications, I don't want to speak religiously because I just, I don't remember off the top of my head. But from there, they have a prescribed due date. They do try to hold somewhat steadfast to the due date, so they consider all the applications carefully. Once they receive the applications, they place all the data into a rubric. From there, they try to combine the nexus of programs that are available for students that are selected. Plus, you have to overlay some of the position, the programs that will fill up quickly. Bosse has articulated this year that welding was a very big one this year. Cosmetology is usually one that fills up, but they have a lot of space. They are trying to make movement within the CTEC program to make sure that they can accommodate as much as possible. The one thing that they did share is they're going to have a little bit of struggle over the next two years as they really get into construction because they're going to have some limited space, but they're going to do it.
Thank you. I honestly had no idea, so I appreciate giving some sort of levels. So is this all decided on the Bosse's?
No, the the local decision is our rubric. The lottery based on the number of seats program is done like that.
So students committed by this on our rubric at the school?
Correct.
May I ask one more question? When the capital project is done for Bosse's, is there an expectation there'll be more opportunities? Like there'll be more students available to go?
So one of the things that they are doing specifically in the project is if you if you face the Gibson Road campus, the largest portion of CTEC is overrun, for lack of a better way to say it, on the left-hand side of the campus.
Right.
They're actually going to rip down one section of that building and build a larger section and build. Right now, it's a very large open space over there and they have trouble segmenting the program. They're actually going to build some more dedicated classrooms. And I think ultimately the hope is for expansion of program to be able to house more students.
Great, thank you.
And just one other question, are any of the decisions, district-level decisions, made based upon what is budgeted?
So it's based on the number of seats that we have prepared for, but we always try to have flexibility in the end. If we're not using resources in a different place and we have more, can we send more students? We try to be as flexible as possible, but the end of the answer is we do have a prescribed number of seats that we actually budget for in the overall annual budget.
Would you be able to, with email communication, like give us an overview of how the rubric works here in our district?
Sure, I'll get a copy of it from the next one.
Just one second, thank you.
Page three. Other points? All right, we had just a couple of items that we touched on earlier that I might follow on differently. What we prepared handout for everybody? We have copies of, hopefully with the signature handout, opening coordinates to give a little bit more clarity and insight on the procedures on the public floor. So the second page of the handout, our snippets from our governance manual and some of our policy, just kind of put it out there in very plain language, plain language, just to give it to them. Also, on the third page, there's actually a sample of one of the adjacent school districts, what they're doing during their public participation form. And it gives that information, but it's also a sign-up form as well. So I just wanted to take a moment to have you take a look at these, give some feedback as to which format and direction you might like to take. And maybe we can get this all set for the next meeting.
Myself, I'd like the sign-up form where you have the rules and what's expected from you, even with this specifying the amount of time. Because I believe because when you're filling out the form, it forces you to read it and and then we can have an understanding between the public who's going to speak and also what could be expected from that man from us in one single form.
Any other thoughts or comments? I tend to agree with Brett, I like this idea of a sheet that you read and then you sign. You're kind of held accountable for that, and it's almost everything you need to know.
I suppose there's a question about that list of goals, so could we make our own form that combines the rules?
Yeah, I agree with that.
I think it are how form, but also kind of principles, I think that would be amazing.
Yeah, so maybe in the end it's type of or format on this.
I like the fact that it automatically gives us an avenue to get back to somebody who speaks. All the information is right here, email, phone number, this one. We missed something or something's written down, spin the page, seven, it looks like a one, you know. So I definitely like this one.
Curious, Maureen, do you have any input regarding a single form versus what we've seen here in the past, the Excel version?
Yeah, I like it.
Okay, great, so maybe what we'll do is we'll circulate this around the email a little bit, try to combine these efforts. And then we'll have it ready for the next meeting. That's that. All right, Maureen, I know you did some work on the governance handbooks. This is updating. Were there any points you'd like us to discuss, and either specific elements you'd like for us to bring up with the scene?
Um, like I said, I just found one other group from Alaska where they really, visually, I think it's nice where they go topic by topic and laying the roles of the board and the roles of the superintendent. And I think taking what we already have and putting it in a different format, I think just makes it easier to read. Really, you know, finds it more, and I think if you see the two next to each other, any misconceptions people may have will be able to fix it.
Yeah, I agree with that also, I like this format. It's a kind of a quick reference guide, right at the back, it's a nice appendix. I think that's an easy go-to. Thoughts on that? Great, favor? Best. Okay, any other comments? All right, very good, then moving on. All right, I need a motion for executive session. Shannon. Be resolved, the Board of Education will enter into an executive session with intent to reconvene the business approach to the meeting, discussions relating to a partial hearing on the history of a particular person.
Aye.